Yeah, so we won't be ready.
So you basically like a emergency.
Correct.
First of all.
Yes. Yes, that's what we used to use too. And that is still available to.
That's kind of why I'm interested in wanting to make such. Three buildings being one.
Well, yeah, they they use the upstairs of the fire station and that's. ADA would get you on that. We still can use it, but. The community center is it's got the handicap ramp and everything, so. Any more discussion? Move the second vote. Three zero. They will raise at that figure. It was in town meeting last summer. Actually, we raised more than that, but I think it was twenty thousand. Okay, animal patrol officer. We found out last week. Lead fields town manager that the phone that the our animal control officer is using was is being paid for by the retail. He doesn't have his own cellphone. So refill funded it. So they asked if we would pay half of it and. Yeah, should be doing that. And so that comes to one eighty four, I think it was. Or two eighty four. Two twenty one?
I'm not remembering.
There's something in there, right? Yeah. What's that?
From what period of time?
It's for a year service. Yeah, one eighty four. What's that?
How much was it?
One eighty four ninety one? The other thing he wanted was he's aggressively going after people that have dogs. You are upset though.
I talked to this guy today.
Yeah.
I told him to go to your house. No, I'm serious. Listen to me. There's a new storm on the Belgrade Road.
On the Belgrade Road.
Female, very friendly rot water. Do you know about that one?
No, I was remembering a different rot water. I met loose last year, but it was in a different spot. Belgrade Road.
Belgrade Road. Right there. Downhill. There on the right. Ethan's garage. It was right there. Make two big me to figure out. Anyway, I called this guy today on that. He was aware of some situation. His homework is what I'm trying to say.
He's also called me. He's he's also looking for a two. Two page warrant warning violation. That he could issue when he. Goes to somebody and wants to to give them a warning. And this would cost for two hundred of them thirty two dollars.
Would you like the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, a motion that we spend thirty two dollars to buy the. The. Thank you. Warning violation sheets for the animal control officer. Just a question or could we just make copies here?
Yeah, I've seen them.
Cause it's like.
The guy from Lucas, the guy who's the ACO for retail.
Yeah.
He could spin us off or he uses them. On white paper or something where you can already get it.
It's a two part thing.
Yeah, that's what they do.
Two part meaning front and back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I lost it.
Printers cost that we can print those.
It would probably cost us more to do that here. We're paying. Yeah, we we pay to use that copy art or so.
And I think that top sheet is piece of card stock.
Yeah.
Yeah, these cards.
So that's a lot.
Stick on somebody's door, you know, like a text.
So what do we do? Do we do it?
We have a.
A motion? Second. A vote. Three zero. Well, what we have done so far is February first is the the date where a twenty five dollar fine comes in. So we sent out a letter last week. Telling people that they should come in and pay before the twenty five dollars.
Right.
Yes, yeah. So and we've got quite a few people that have come in.
So that's what he's checking on.
Correct. Now. What will happen now is. That will give him a copy of all the parts that have not been. So what he'll do, he's not gonna go out and harass people. But if he gets a call from a person. He matches it up as a violation, then he'll issue on the citation.
But that's only dogs that have already been registered. And they're just not re-registered.
Right, we don't know. Yeah, how many out there that are? We don't know about. I don't know.
That ways.
Okay. The stairs in the basement, going down to the basement, community, our community center. We're gonna hold off on that. They're gonna be pouring a slab down there. Community Center is working on that. So I just shouldn't wait and not do anything with the stairs until that's done.
Is the slab? Not, yeah. Is that part of this round of work or not till the noon? I thought it was until the next round of work. Okay.
She's working on bids on that right now.
Does anybody know how June is doing?
She is still in a wheelchair. Not walking.
That caught me by surprise that you don't have insurance.
The volunteers.
A volunteer. Town ought to have insurance on their properties. So if anybody gets hurt.
No, okay, we have liability. If someone gets hurt on our property, we have liability. What we're talking here is accident insurance.
Right, but she so but you you said she wasn't covered by the.
She she's not covered by accident insurance. She is covered by liability. Two different things.
Yes, you know, I guess it blew my mind. You want to make sure it covered, you know.
Okay, out of business. Okay, Lake Hill Bridge. The state just came out with a three year, the three year program, five year program. So I quickly got in touch with. Steve Cole, who is our district guy. The. Schedule for the Blake Hill Bridge is in the twenty four, twenty five year, two thousand twenty four. That means in twenty twenty four. They should start construction of that bridge. And they have allocated two point five million dollars for the project.
What portion do we pay? Does it count pay?
Yeah, we we have not been told how much. Because they still haven't decided on whether or not we will be the contractor or they will be the contractor.
And we put some of the broadband excess money towards the Lake Hill Bridge.
How much how much broadband money was left?
Twenty thousand.
How much?
Twenty thousand. So what they what Steve is gonna do is he's gonna work with the bridge engineers, state bridge engineers, and he said this is gonna take time. So don't expect an answer real quick. Maybe a couple of months or so. And they're gonna look at the feasibility and looking at who can do it the cheapest and stuff like that, less expensive way of doing it. And. So we'll get back at that point.
What was the feasibility? What amount are they asking?
They put in their budget two point five million. We went out and got a bid. And so it was last year for six or eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand.
That was using the technology of the puddle hill bridge.
No, no, that was.
Expansion of twenty percent.
Yeah. Didn't we, didn't we look at trying to use the technology of puddle hill over there?
No, it was too much of a span. So.
So that's a huge increase over what we quoted this before.
Well, if we do it, we would have to go back to the engineer and it's definitely gonna be more than eight hundred thousand at this point. Steel prices have gone way down. So the longer we wait, the more it's gonna be.
So what's gonna happen with the money that we amrak for that bridge?
It's.
Carry over until twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we need to make sure of, that it stays.
Oh, yeah. We can't spend it.
So I I'm sorry, but did we ever get a final number on what they spent on broadband?
We can.
Cause I never I never saw that and I lost track. But I thought that probably should be more than twenty thousand dollars left from that money.
Well, they're. They've spent to date seventy three thousand nine hundred ninety two.
Two days, two days. We can't spend anymore.
Right. Well, unless it's outstanding bill, but I don't think there is, but.
Okay, so we have cut off all extended just for new extended just for broadband.
Unless there's something out there. I don't know.
Okay, because I.
Once that initiative failed. That was the end.
I don't.
Cause still.
We had a contract that we paid a couple of bills on what he's trying to do. So. I I oh, I'm gonna give a broadband update as part of the meeting too.
Sorry.
But you don't have a figure on that? How much is left in that budget?
Yeah. It was my misunderstanding because things were up to. So I was drawing down from Arfa as things were being spent. I didn't realize that the twenty twenty seven thousand five hundred from last year. There's twelve thousand of that that hadn't been spent. I didn't realize that was supposed to carry over. So I actually do have. With that, there is actually in Arfa funds, there's fifty eight thousand one hundred thirty four dollars and forty nine cents left because we allocated up to eighty nine, sorry, sixty one thousand seven hundred eighty nine dollars and sixteen cents for the Blake Hill Engineering, but we only spent thirty one thousand eight hundred. So. We said up to sixty one. So the left of the twenty nine thousand nine hundred eighty nine, should that carry over? For the Blake Hill Bridge or?
Yeah.
Okay, so then broadband up to twenty seven five last year, there's twelve thousand left, twelve thousand seven hundred twenty six. And then this year we said up to eighty nine and they've spent seventy three nine ninety two. So there's fifteen thousand. Three hundred, so twenty eight thousand. Twenty nine thousand.
Almost sixty thousand dollars left in there that could go with the bridge.
It would have to be voted on though.
Right.
Well, part of that from.
Could be spent on something else.
Right.
Well, if there's some very specific things about the Arfa money because it depends. And you're gonna give an update, so I'll wait for that because there's some very specific ways you can spend it. You can't just take and say, oh, the left of our money, I'm gonna go spend on the generator.
Right. Okay. So. Okay, that's all set.
Recovery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a hundred. From that. Spent it on like a bridge engineering and broadband.
Okay.
And this is a question that was left from there.
Roads, don't we put fifty thousand for consultation on the roads?
Get voted down. Okay. We got a little problem that came up this week. Got a letter from Somerset County Communication Center. Now, they are the ones where when you dial nine one one, they receive the phone call and they dispatch to Winthrop. And they went through dispatches to us to fire and rescue. Somerset County. They're having a hard time staffing. So they've decided to drop all their Quebec County towns. Water though, Augusta, all the Winthrop's dispatching places. Yeah. I talked with the Winthrop Police Chief today. And he said that they were having a state meeting today and he would keep us abreast of what's happening. They can't just leave us with no one to do the work. So it's in one way, it's a short period of time. We're talking about till July first. That's when they're gonna stop. That's what the letter says. So they can't just leave us high and dry. Apparently, the chief of police in Winthrop got called from Anderson. Communication Center. Maybe there's a chance to go there. So everything's up in the air. Checking on this. The best I can do right now. They do, but most of the, most of the towns in Quebec went to Somerset Dispatch because they were cheaper.
You're probably gonna wanna talk to mutually approved chiefs from the fire department.
That's why I talked to the.
Because I don't believe Andrew Skodan is going to be able to reach most of the towers in our mutually.
Well, we will, but yeah, they will, but. I don't think that they would be able to carry, how they're gonna cover Waterville, Augusta, all out of little towns. No one's gonna be able to take that load. And it's not conceivable that Somerset is gonna be able to drop that many towns. That's a lot, all of it. A lot of.
They were having trouble when they had a slogan. I ain't been there pretty.
I think they're stirring it.
They were having some problem within Lewis and all of that on on what they were doing. So, you know.
So we should hear what what happened today. The chief said he's gonna keep in touch with me to figure out what's going on. Okay. Aaron Earls would like to be on the Budget Committee. And I would like to make a motion to put Aaron Earls on Budget Committee. And a vote. Three zero. Oh, Barbara.
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to ask some questions. Sure.
Go for it.
Um, I wasn't here at last meeting.
Yeah.
Of the storm. Um, so I wasn't able to go through my shtick on regarding the policy of the town, environmentally friendly, let's support the butterflies and pollinators and all that stuff. Um, but actually the cooperative extension people are very interested in cooperating in town here to get something going.
Yep.
And they had various ideas and they're perfectly happy to come and talk to us. So that's fine. In the meantime, you guys apparently made a decision regarding quote mowing of lawns or something. I got an email from you today. And it raises questions to me. And it says, what do you got against butterflies and pollinators? Roger, I'm asking you.
I have nothing against butterflies. I think that in our meeting last week, we decided that the cemeteries shouldn't be something that at least at this point in time should be, should not be mowed. Because there were a lot of veterans in those cemeteries and they needed to be, the cemeteries needed to be prepared for Memorial Day. I think that there's a lot of opportunity here to educate the community in terms of why we might want to do not mow. And and I think I'd be more than happy to write her about a program to for, you know, individuals to not mow in month of May, as you requested. If Bob also suggested that if you want to override our initial vote here about the cemeteries, that we would certainly entertain that at a special meeting.
The cemetery's perpetual care.
How much, what percentage of the town properties that we have are cemeteries roughly?
Well.
Thirty percent, forty percent.
Well, I would say it's about eighty percent of a cemetery.
About eight, there are centers including.
The ball.
So therefore your arguments were made about cemeteries, rather than say the beach. Property or the property in front of the house, the building right there.
We're entertaining you put flowers.
Him, please.
Okay.
Cause you keep talking all the time, but I really wanna hear from the others.
In terms of, we we certainly talked about putting in a flower garden here. In fact, Carrie was talking about some plants to potentially put in that flower garden. And would certainly be happy to participate and I'd be happy to participate in actually helping with that project. That's.
Flower garden where? What kind of flower?
Well, I believe you talked about a, that there used to be a flower garden along the sidewalk.
Demonstration project.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about. Are you talking about this property here or back behind the building? Which appears to me that's where you wanted to go back there.
Well, we talked about a flower garden in the front. We didn't talk about, we the perspective was that we would not it would not be a good idea to not mow that front section, but we would put in a or volunteers would put in a are welcome to put in a pollinator type garden.
Okay, thank you. What about you, Anna?
Yeah, I agree. I would love to put a pollinator garden out front. I think it'd be lovely. And. I think we also talked about some education through the newsletter or a sample plot somewhere, if it makes sense, like here's what it could look like. So if there's some excitement from you, and I think a couple other people you said were excited too, I think we could get a nice little group going and make some beautiful gardens. It'd be lovely. One of the things I suggested, like in this area, it's hard to get things that look really nice or but it are early bloomers and big for the bees. Nine Bark is this beautiful bush that gets very early flowers. My bees love it. It's it's recommended. So a couple of those and I have a couple of people who might follow.
So you're, what kind of property are you suggesting you use with the blessing of the town?
Oh, I think we were talking about right out in front.
Just on here.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm glad to clear that up because the message I got from Bob was, hi Barb, you're welcome to do a garden. It's out back. Where nobody would see it, of course. Right? Did I get it wrong? Totally wrong? Okay, beg your pardon. Mayor Coolman. All right, Bob, you. What we have, what was your decision based on?
Yeah, here, the memorial lot in the village. You could ask the library. They could.
I could turn about properties, you know, that the town owns. Okay.
So some of them. Because I'm I'm kind of on both sides of the fence on this one. The the beach, because of tick smell. That's kind of, we have to mow that. And of course.
Nobody's saying in this group that we can't mow. The whole idea is to preserve what pollinators we have in the environment. Which basically pollinate in April, May, those are critical months. Right? So what we're asking people to do, yeah, and this is not just many, that's all right. I was trying to keep the damn lawn hours high. So they don't eliminate pollinators. It's just, that's all we're talking about here.
Personally, I took care of a cemetery when I was young. And then in my twenties and all, then I took care of a cemetery. And and if that was not mowed by Memorial Day, you heard it. And I think you're gonna have people come out of the woodworks. If you let the grass grow in town here, I say that takes away from the character of the town. I want my town to look beautiful. We have we have fields that that Julie Hall doesn't mow until June, if you lie. We have, we have fields all over. Jacobs had a field. I think there's a big percentage of the of the things where butterflies grow. It doesn't have to be the town. I think if you take over all the whole, all the fields in that town, there's a big percentage. I want the center of my town to look good and I want my cemetery to look good.
Sure.
So and so does that, I think you're gonna find out most of the town says that ninety five percent of the town's gonna say that.
Absolutely.
I am, I agree with gardens, which look very nice, but not not mowing the lawns. That's not, that's not for me.
Wherever there's a, there's a flat university, you know, this is the University of Maine, the the club skate on the corner. You should look into that.
That'd be a perfect.
That'd be a perfect place.
Yeah, it is a nice place. Get the right people and equipment. Is there a houthis that goes up to this point?
Uh, no hopes, but there is a faucet.
There's a faucet.
Was it right over here on the side?
Okay, all right, great.
It's off because we don't want anybody to use it for drinking, but it could be turned on.
While the, while the subject of beauty, that sign out there, maybe this new lady can help us, that's, they've been there for a year, plus that big black thing, it's supposed to be a digital something or other. Are you an expert on getting that thing going?
I'm not an expert, but I'm sure I can.
Oh, hallelujah. It is, talking about beautification of the town, it ain't pretty. And the one downtown at the fire station works, you know, every time there's something urgent going on, the fire station's on top of it, you know, it's fine. Temperature, do I carefully watch, you know, watch for ice a little?
Take it down and.
Or take it down and the flowers there.
I suggest that when they put this thing out, I'd suggest that they put porn movies on it. And sell tickets at night because that would be really, and, no, they listen to me.
Creative fundraising idea.
You gotta, you gotta raise money somehow.
I would say get rid of it.
Me too. I'm with you. Just hang a sign that says, select this meeting tonight or something. I think I'm in Darien, Connecticut.
What do we have to do to get that side remote? Do we have to get a tissue?
I have the remote right here.
I know, to get rid of it.
To get rid of it?
Yeah.
What you could do, you could get a.
That's a lot of money.
Everybody.
Yeah, you should never use a white background anyway, because it's not good for visual impact.
One more question about the garden. The granite. Cliffs posts that are. Yeah, could those be used to kind of edge off a garden?
Yeah, they're not tall enough to be standing.
No, no, lay down, cause they're, they're really beautiful old hitchy posts.
Oh, no, you can't see them with all that going to jump in.
Yeah.
Well, right, but they're just laid down.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be really pretty.
Thank you.
I only have one more thing. We still have to schedule a safety training. Uh, Fire and Rescue did theirs, which was a two and a half hour one. I went through it with them. We have to do one with the office people, library, and. Uh, testing station.
The blood, bloodborne pathogen.
I was thinking like a Monday night. Not working that up.
And someone's swearing, they're not following my chair.
I can't remember how much it is.
For whoever did it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's nice.
I don't write it, cause I'm not sure.
Cause I've already had it, so if you don't need me to take it, you have already had it.
When is the planning board meeting that we're supposed to be having the training or they can't? February twelve or something?
On the website. I gotta notice. I can't, oh, yeah, I got it right here. February twenty-one, Tuesday.
That's the, that's the meeting, and I'm talking about the, we're supposed to have a training.
Oh, a training, MMA training?
MMA training.
Oh.
Hang on, not enough service.
I can email you.
All right. I just, I just see, uh, on the seventeenth, well, that's very fast.
Yeah, sometime in February. And if they do it right here, you could watch the screen and it'd be, it'd be great.
The only thing that's coming up for February is on the twenty-first. So there is one other topic I wanted to bring up, and that is that there, there, in terms of broadband, there is a new vendor that came to us that. It wants to, uh, wants us to consider. Putting in fiber to the home. And we're still in the early phases of learning about that. It sounds like it's gonna be a whole lot less money than what we had on the table last time. Uh, it would probably still require a special town meeting, so. I wanna make sure everybody's aware that there's another broadband possibility coming up.
Where are they located?
It's, it's fitting. It's fitting. Where it's consolidated communication, basically, they're now putting in fiber across the state.
And they can use the existing poles, cause they are.
They can use the existing poles, so the cost would be less because of that and things like that. They would cover everybody in town.
So would that hit our taxes, like the other?
I think it's too early to say. I don't know. The third, they're asking for, it sounds like there's gonna be some amount of money they want upfront, and how we decide to. Provide that money is to be determined.
Doesn't the vote count for anything?
It, yeah, we stopped.
We, we voted on it, and the people voted, and they. So, uh, is this gonna keep happening over and over until? Until, until somebody ends up doing it, something against the people's will. I, I'm so sorry of government legislating to, to the people. And it, it's wrong. The people voted against it. Once the people vote, they have spoken.
People voted against that specific arrangement.
They're gonna continue to use the broadband money from Arco?
No, you can't.
How are you getting the money to?
They're just in a preliminary stage of listening to that.
So they're not asking for any money?
No. Yeah.
Okay, so the Arco money that is not used, then the town would need to go back for another vote. To figure out how to use it on anything else.
Right.
Okay.
What was specifically earmarked for broadband?
Okay.
What was set up for?
So we could have a choice as to how we spent that town, whether we put it on the bridge or.
Right.
For broadband.
Does that Arco money have to be spent within a certain amount of time, or is it allotted in that?
You get quite a, quite a few years.
I think it's, I don't know how.
Six, six years or something. Quite a while.
I'll look it up.
I've got, I was gonna, meaning, I think it was thinking the project had to take place within a certain amount of time after the money was allocated. The, you'd be wrong, but. No, it's quite a while. Meeting next week or this week I have to go to. Okay, on the night.
See, my end, I just got their broad being. The state's all paid for. Go to Scotia, call up.
Uh, you might wanna get on to that one. MMA is having a. Uh, Zoom meeting. On February ninth, Tuesday, Thursday, I was first thing in the morning. Uh, and they're talking about the. Opera funds, how to do the bookwork on it, second round. I'll zoom in on that too.
February night?
Yeah. I think it's eight o'clock.
You sending information on that? You were gonna get me the rest of my four year request.
It's been sitting waiting.
Now, there's like a twelve day limit on the four year request.
Just like to keep you on your toes.
I don't know what happened to it.
Maybe by next meeting?
You remember what I was supposed to give you? Oh.
Was.
Yeah, minutes. Agenda.
I just got posted on one.
No, this is.
The ones that I requested. I requested a little series for the roots somewhere from this.
agendas, that's true.
We might have to do that list again.
Meeting night should all be there.
It was, it was from, you know, the.
Can you give me that list again?
Yeah, I'll give it.
I thought I put it up there.
I thought you did too.
That's why when I saw you today, I figured out. Um, anybody else have any comments, questions?
Oh, what about this? Eighty unit old people's home that they're proposing, you know, when it's like a. CPC, yeah, they're looking for twenty-five acres.
Yeah.
But an eighty unit.
Yeah.
Old people's home.
I don't know about eighty units.
It's posted at.
Clyde Dyer and. What's her name?
Sandy.
Sandy Wright.
Yeah.
Sandy would know. I don't know.
Isn't that something that they would have to go through you for?
Yep.
I don't think.
They had to go through a lot. I don't, I think they're just in the planning stages. I've, Clyde mentioned something about trying to find land, but.
Cause I know at one time you were looking for land, considering. Jewel Halls, but she only had.
Yeah, that wasn't.
Two acres and then up on.
Crystal tree. Yeah, that's too much money.
Yeah, well, and that's probably a lot of building or land.
Yeah, yeah.
What I read, but, but it does make a little bit of sense. It is for residents of the town of Mount Vernon who don't wanna be forced to move.
Yeah.
That's what it was for, right? They can't afford to, to stay where they're staying now, but they, but residents of the town. Makes some sense, but nonetheless.
Can you have something like that and discriminate by not letting other people?
Well, that's okay with me.
I don't know what the.
You know, when she throws me out after I'm eighty-two, I don't have a place to go.
What's happening?
It's the Planning Board. Registration for Planning Board class.
Did you already?
By Carl, so.
Did you already register? Yes.
Yeah, well, we all did, uh, registered us all back in, called seventeen.
Yeah, if you do it up here and you need someone to get it going, that would be good. I think that's what the appeals board did. They met right here and they all zoomed.
Assume that probably Bill would be here for it. I don't know that, but.
We have to take it every year.
No.
Yeah, Bill's already got the.
Oh, I'm sure he has. I'm sure he's gonna be here with the.
Everybody all set? I move that we adjourn. Oh, reset.
Thank you.